...to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Frye?
Here.
Mr. Hanson?
Here.
Mr. Hanum?
Here.
Mr. McCann?
Here.
Mr. Richardson?
Here.
Ms. Stout?
Here.
Mrs. Westfall?
Here.
All seven members of City Council are present, therefore a quorum does exist. I welcome all of you to our council meeting tonight. We'll get to Mrs. Booker as item number five on the agenda. But welcome to your family, who I got to meet out in the lobby. And I also welcome the scouts here from Maplewood. And would ask if you would have your scouts lead us in our pledge of allegiance right now, tonight.
Of allegiance.
In the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and justice for all.
Thank you. additions to the agenda, I have none for this evening. Mr. Frye?
Mr. Mayor, there, I don't see anything here on me making a report. I can just do that under committee reports for the Finance Committee meeting.
Perfect. Any additional items from other members of City Council? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. Moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our council agenda for this evening's meeting is approved as amended. Agenda item four is approval of our council meeting minutes from our last meeting on January the third. Mr. Frye?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move for adoption of the meeting minutes of the council meeting of January third, two thousand twenty-three, as submitted.
Second.
Then moved and seconded to approve those meeting minutes as submitted, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and our meeting minutes from January the third are approved. Agenda item five, we have a proclamation to present tonight to our friend Sharon Booker. You know how the, how this works, Sharon. Come on up, come on. Children, grandchildren are home with your spouses. Seven. That's wonderful. I do have a proclamation here tonight, which I'm going to read to you, and I'm happy to be doing so. Whereas Sharon Booker began her career in public service in Monclova Township in nineteen eighty-six as the assistant to the Monclova Township Fiscal Officer, until nineteen ninety-six, when she was elected the Monclova Township Fiscal Office, Officer, an office that she held for thirteen years. And whereas following her service to Monclova Township, Sharon came to the city of Slovenia in two thousand and nine as an administrative assistant in the Department of Finance, and since two thousand twelve has also served as the clerk of council. And whereas due to, in part, to Sharon's contributions to the Department of Finance, the city of Slovenia recently received the Ohio Auditor of State Award, which is given for excellence in financial reporting for the two thousand and twenty-one fiscal year. And whereas Sharon has provided consistent and outstanding contributions to the city of Slovenia in both the Department of Finance and as clerk of Slovenia City Council, now therefore I, Craig A. Stow, Mayor, do hereby proclaim today, Tuesday, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Sharon Booker Day in the city of Slovenia.
Mr. Mayor, since Miss, Mrs. Booker was clerk of council, would it be okay if we could get a picture of the council members and Mrs. Booker as well?
Absolutely. I think you'll all be closer together if you come down here.
It's been an honor to work with all of you.
You need to be in the center. You think that it? Thank you very much. Appreciate all your work.
Thank you. It's been an honor to work for all of you.
Sharon, I did want to take just.
Yeah.
Sharon, I did want to just take a quick minute to extend my personal thanks. I think that as president of council from two thousand twelve till, two thousand sixteen, eighteen, it must have been, twenty? Whenever, whatever it was. Who can remember all those years ago? You know, I had the real honor and pleasure of working with you, and you made my job so easy. I knew I had someone who had my back every minute. No matter what I forgot, no matter what I didn't do correctly, you always were there to back me up, and I extend my most sincere and heartfelt thanks to you. I will miss you so much. I know that you've done the same for Mark during these last couple of years, but it was truly an honor and a privilege. I know we're in great hands with Laura, so we count our blessings there. But it was so fun to get to know you during this little window in my life and get to know your expertise and learn so much about your beautiful family, so happiness always.
Here, here.
It's been a pleasure.
Right here. No doubt.
Sharon, you are welcome to stay for the whole meeting.
I'm just gonna say, are you going somewhere special? Are you going somewhere special while the kids are at home?
Not too late to make that decision. Yes, that sounds good.
Have fun. Form our seats up for us.
Sounds like a good plan.
All right.
Thank you very much.
We are now up to agenda item six. Town crier Michael Lieber contacted me last week and said he'd like to come in and make his annual report, which I noticed earlier this year than previous years, so thank you, Michael.
Can I come up there?
Yep, I'm up to the podium.
I would told I could speak for an hour and a half. I got plenty of notice.
It wasn't me.
I think I don't need a mic. Everybody can hear me all right. Can you hear me back there all right?
All right.
Good. I am starting my twenty-eighth year this year, and it's been a nice ride. I really enjoyed it. And a couple of years ago, it's been slow for a few years there because of virus. During the last year, I did forty-five performances, and I usually normally do seventy to eighty, so I'm hoping I'm back up there this year. I'm gonna set my book here, and if you want to get a chance to look at it, everything's in here, newspaper articles, and all my cries for two thousand twenty-two. I sent, gave each a copy of what I've been doing for the year, same thing, it was in the book. You'll find a copy of, I listed a list of people who've helped me through the year off and on, and also you'll see the proclamation from the city of Slovenia when I first started. Because I think there's only about two left on council from back then, or, I know you were.
I was.
He's it.
Oh, is that right?
Yep.
This is nineteen ninety-five.
Yes. And when I started out, I figured I only do this four or five times a year. Wrong.
That's probably what Mayor Sinek told you.
Nobody told me yet. Just add it. I am known as a world town crier, official town crier. I've cried mostly all around the world. Australia, Europe, Canada, you can almost name some of the countries. So that's what I've been doing. And then I belong to them, still belong to the American Guild of Town Criers, the Australian Guild of Town Criers, and also the Ontario Guild of Town Criers. I've been town crier for the American Legion out on Centennial Road for quite a few years, and also for Zenovio Shriners. I'm their town crier. And there's only one other crier in the world that cries for the Shriners, and he lives up in Canada. And that's it. Did I get my hour and a half in? So if I ain't got any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
We're very fortunate to have Mike representing the city of Slovenia as our town crier. He's in demand in other communities. He shows up at oftentimes at naturalization services and things like that. And he is instrumental in our sister city program with Woodstock and spent a couple of nights up there this past year for their Santa Claus parade. He's well-known up there. He led their Santa Claus parade up there this year, was on camera quite a bit. And Mike, they were discussing with you the possibility of you being their town crier due to their absence of a current town crier.
That would be an honorary one, because this is my main one.
Sure.
And I know I can't go up there that much. We'll be working on a grant, trying to get a grant to help pay to go up there.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, and I do enjoy it still.
People enjoy seeing you.
Thank you.
They ask Mike if he's the mayor. I can't tell you how many times.
I don't get that much more.
I'll have a student come up to me and say, is that the mayor?
Well, we were in downtown Woodstock one time, walking with the mayor going over to do the light on, I did also their Christopher Street lighting. And on our way over there, one lady pointed to me, she says, I was her mayor.
Oh, you're the mayor of Woodstock? Wow.
Yeah. But I didn't get the money for it.
I can't tell you, the mayor of Woodstock is much better enumerated than the mayor here in Slovenia.
I know. I met a lot of mayors around and did a few jobs for them. They're still the best.
Well, thank you. All right, thanks for coming in, Mike.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Okay.
Okay, now we are up to agenda item seven, which has to do with the resurfacing work on McCord Road. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is approval of the local let agreement with ODOT. It's a standard agreement that they have in, when they're providing funding, but the local agency is actually handing, handling the bidding and construction services and things of that nature. It basically just spells out the responsibilities, indicates that ODOT is providing the five hundred thousand dollars, and we've obviously have done several projects with ODOT funding and are well aware of what our responsibilities are, so we recommend approval of the agreement.
We do have ordinance number four, two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions for Mr. Aller before proceeding? Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number four, two thousand twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to enter into an agreement with the state of Ohio Department of Transportation on behalf of the city of Slovenia for the McCord Road, Slovenia Avenue to Brent Road resurfacing project, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number four, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance four, two thousand and twenty-three is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item eight has to do with the Haroon Ravine and Flower Hospital Intersection Improvement Project. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project has moved through the stage one, plan review and comments, and is now through stage two. At this stage, we're ready to start putting together right-of-way acquisitions and appraisals and things of that nature. We received a proposal from W E Realty Solutions, who's been very involved with us on other projects here in town, and their proposal for the title work, appraisals, any negotiations that might be necessary and document recordings at thirty-six thousand and forty dollars. And then we also, part of ODOT's requirement is that if Firm A does the right-of-way appraisals and negotiations, then Firm B has to review those and make sure that everything was done appropriately and, and that they agree with how that work was done. We received a proposal from American Property Analysts for the appraisal review services, and that's in the amount of four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And we've also done, American Property has been involved on also a couple of other projects here in town, and, and we're familiar with their work. We recommend approval of both agreements with W E Realty and American Property Analysts. These project, this work was included in our capital improvement budget and will be paid out of the capital improvement fund.
We have just gone through a lot of right-of-way acquisitions for the Monroe Street silica road improvement projects. How many right-of-way negotiations do you think are involved in this one?
We anticipate being involved with three parcels on this project, and I believe it may, may just be two owners. One of the part, one of the property owners is Flower Hospital, Prometica. The property owner on the northeast corner, excuse me, got myself turned around, southwest corner. And I believe the other parcel, I believe two of the parcels are Flower Hospital parcels, and then the property owner on the southwest corner.
All right. Questions for Mr. Aller? There are none. We have two ordinances tonight to approve both of those contracts. Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number five, two thousand twenty-three, accepting the proposal of W E Realty Solutions Limited to provide right-of-way acquisition services relative to the Haroon Road Ravine Drive Flower Hospital Intersection Improvement Project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of thirty-six thousand and forty dollars, and I would move passage as an emergency measure.
Second. Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number five, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance five, two thousand and twenty-three is enacted as an emergency measure. Ordinance six, two thousand and twenty-three, Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number six, two thousand twenty-three by title only, accepting the proposal of American Property Analysts Inc. to provide appraisal review services relative to the Haroon Road Ravine Drive Flower Hospital Intersection Improvement Project, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of four thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, and I move passage as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number six, two thousand and twenty-three as an emergency measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance six, two thousand and twenty-three is enacted as an emergency measure. All right. We're now up to agenda item nine with, which is vehicle purchases for the division of water. Mr. Aller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're looking, we're requesting approval of a proposal that we received from Bonjes Ford in Slovenia Township. They've provided a proposal in the amount of thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars each for two pickups, bringing the total purchase from them to sixty-seven thousand dollars. The, these pickups were included in the two thousand twenty-three operating budget. The, these pickups were included in the 2023 operating budget for the water fund and will be purchased from the water fund. Should you approve the purchase, these pickups will replace a 1999 pickup and a 2011 pickup. And once we receive the new trucks, then we'll be coming back to you for permission to advertise those on gov deals at a future time. But we do believe that Brondies Ford, they have assured us that delivery is, will be forthcoming. Many, many trucks that we purchased last year, we still don't have. And we're still waiting for those. But they've indicated that these are on a short turnaround and that we should have them within a couple of months.
Is that how we pick Brondies?
It's one of the, one of the issues. Chevy was not, they are way behind on everything. And we've, I think our last, last several vehicles have been Chevrolet. We've been able to purchase from Dave White here. Yep. But they're, they're quite behind on deliveries. And Dodges were going to be the same thing. They said there was probably going to be 2024 before we would get them. So we did advance these with Brondies. From a price point, we're still slightly ahead. These were good proposals that they put together. And then couple that with the, with the delivery, it made it the best offer in our opinion, so.
Do we have to outfit these vehicles at all?
There will be some outfitting here. These are pretty much straightforward pickups and will likely take the boxes off of some of our existing vehicles and put them onto here. So the outfitting cost is much less than what it, what it typically might be.
Under normal operating cost provision.
Correct. Yeah.
And it, I led to believe that Brondies Ford is not necessarily a state authorized cooperative purchasing program occupant, but you've used the number in there to establish this amount.
Yeah. Anything, if, if they are not the, if they do not hold the state contract, as long as you're able to negotiate a deal that is at or below that state term contract pricing, you're able to make that purchase without formal bidding.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Aller? All right, we do have proposed ordinance seven, 2023 to purchase these two vehicles. Mr. McCann.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce by title only ordinance number seven dash 2023, authorizing the mayor and director of finance to accept the proposals of Brondies Ford for the purchase of two new 2023 Ford F-150 pickup trucks for the city of Slovenia Department of Public Service, Division of Water, appropriating funds therefore in the amount of $67,000. I would move passage of ordinance number twenty, or seven dash 2023 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage, ordinance number 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance seven, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. Agenda item 10. Approval of two city vehicles to be offered for auction on govdeals.com. Mr. Aller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a follow-up from previous purchases that you had approved and that we have finally received. The first vehicle, we got a, one of the new vehicles that we got in to the police department. We transferred one of their existing vehicles to the courts for their bailiff to be able to make trips and warrant notices. And then we will, this vehicle here is what courts was using, the 2009 Ford Crown Victoria, and we're recommending that we put that on gov deals for purchase. The 2006 Ford F-350, that is the replacement. We just received a truck in the sewer department, a small dump truck there. And we are ready to dispose of this vehicle. So we ask for permission to list them on gov deals.
I have a quick question.
This is Westfall.
Not specifically related to this, but while we're on the topic. Do you find that the items you put on gov deals really do sell? We don't really hear about them. They go to gov deals and...
Yeah, no, we, yeah, we receive, you know, every time we purchase a vehicle, we do ask what trade-in value, what, what will you give us in trade-in? And then we make a determination between the departments, vehicle maintenance department and myself, that, you know, no, we think we can do better on gov deals. It's very rare that we actually trade a vehicle in. We typically do quite a bit better on gov deals, yeah.
I did get to see the new police division vehicle today. It is the new stealth vehicle? Be wary of it.
Sounds serious.
Chief, anything you want to say about that one? It's a very good-looking car, but you don't notice it because it doesn't have a light bar on top and the graphics on the side are black. They are reflective, so you see them better at night, but it is a stealth vehicle, no doubt about it. What's the status of the marked patrol vehicle that we're waiting? We've been waiting quite a long time for these two vehicles. They're 2022s, but they were ordered in 2021. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, we've been waiting.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fr- Mr. Frye, I need a motion to-
Stealth, stealth vehicle's black?
It's black. It's all black. It doesn't have the white doors like a regular vehicle?
Yeah.
A regular police vehicle? It is the same model of car.
Okay.
But it doesn't catch your eye as a police vehicle. And the light bar is mounted inside the rear window.
Ah.
And what's the use of that vehicle, chief? Clarifying question, Mr. Aller. The delivery of the new trucks, timing?
The new pickups?
The Brondies. Yes.
They indicated that we should have them within a couple of months.
And that we will, if we pass this, advertise after that for, for the existing vehicles?
These are different, these are vehicles that we received, that we've already received. They were actually 21 in, 2021 and 2022 approvals for new vehicles. Now that those vehicles have come in, now we're getting, yeah, getting rid of those.
That was the clarifying, I was-
Yeah. I'll, I'll come back to you in hopefully a couple of months. If we get them when they say we'll get them and ask to dispose of two more vehicles. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Frye, a motion to advertise on gov deals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to advertise the, the 2009 Ford Crown Victoria and the 2006 Ford F-350 one-ton truck on gov deals for VIN numbers from the, from the memo from Mr. Aller dated January 17th.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and the listing is approved.
Thank you.
Going to the second page of our agenda for this evening, we're up to agenda item 11. Going to have the chief come up. There's a couple of data issues that since we have, now have our new tablets inside the patrol cars, we can move on to other agencies. Chief Miller.
Very good. Now, we need to do this by ordinance. We have ordinance number eight, 2023. Questions?
I have a question. Who did the data eradication, data erasure and surety on that? Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We have ordinance eight, 2023. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number eight dash 2023, and I will read by title only. Authorizing the donation of Data Lux tablets to Lucas County Emergency Medical Services, determining said property to be of no further use to the city of Slovenia. I move passage of ordinance number eight, 2023 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number eight, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance eight, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure. On to agenda item 12, modems.
Very good. Questions for the chief? We have ordinance number nine, 2023 to make this donation. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce ordinance number nine, 2023, and I will read by title only. Authorizing the donation of eight Sierra Wireless AirLink modems to the White House Police Department, determining said property to be of no further use to the city of Slovenia. I move passage of ordinance number nine, 2023 as an emergency measure.
Second.
Been moved and seconded for passage of ordinance number nine, 2023 as an emergency measure. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and ordinance nine, 2023 is enacted as an emergency measure.
Thank you, chief. Moving on to agenda item 13. I am asking for your confirmation of my new appointment with the Slovenia Civil Service Commission. Mr. John Hussman has served on there since 1994. He was appointed by Mayor Jim Sini and has approached me saying he spent enough years on there and he is ready for retire. He is now 80 years old. He's given the city wonderful service on that commission. Is now ready to retire. I looked around the city and considered different people and decided I would like to have a woman represented on that board. It was three men currently. And I thought of Mrs. Kathy McGuire. She is a insurance group owner here in town and last year purchased the ENC Bank building on Monroe Street at the end of River Crossings Drive and has remodeled that and is doing business out of there. And to all reports is doing very good business out of it. I think she's a, as a employer of people and as a businessperson here in town, I think she'll be an excellent asset to our Civil Service Commission. And I ask for your confirmation of my appointment. It is a six-year appointment. There is one position that comes up every two years. There are three members of the Civil Service Commission, so they come up every two years. We've got a couple of tests scheduled for patrolmen and police sergeants coming up here in the next couple of months, and I would like to have that commission back at full strength.
Mr. Mayor, I was so delighted when I saw this in my packet. I know Kathy McGuire from a number of years, and I think she's an excellent-
I agree with those comments. I also have known her for a long time. And I think she would be a wonderful addition to the city, for the city.
She was excited to be thought of and immediately accepted and is looking forward to serving the city. So with that, Mr. Frye, I need a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to, to confirm Kathy McGuire's appointment to the Slovenia Civil Service Commission as of January 2023, with an expiration of her appointment expiring December 31 of 2028.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to confirm the mayor's appointment of Kathy McGuire to the Civil Service Commission. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and that confirmation is approved. On to agenda item 14. Added agenda item 14A, a report of the Finance Committee meeting held this evening before city council. Mr. Frye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The purpose of the Finance Committee meeting this evening was to discuss and consider ordinance number 101 dash 2022, which, which was regarding the, the potential addition of commercial property owners to be required to provide information to, to the city for income tax purposes of their new tenants. Members of, all members of the committee were in attendance at the meeting as well as other members of council, Mr. McCann, Ms. Stahl, and Mr. Hanson. Others present were Mayor, Mr. Sanford, Mrs. Browning, Mrs. Bigelow, Chief Miller, Mr. Schroyer, and Mr. Silvernail, as well as, as our tax commissioner, Ms. Puerto Rico. Sorry, Kristy, if you're watching this on video, I apologize. I butchered it. So the city already had such, had the ordinance in place for residential tenants and the expansion of that to a commercial. There was a significant amount of concern despite the fact that Mommy and Perrysburg had similar ordinances for the commercial property owners as well, whether or not we should make this into a misdemeanor, a criminal penalty. And after a lot of discussion about what, what occurred and, and how this would mechanically work, we came to a conclusion as, as members of the committee that ask the administration to go back and restructure this so that residential and commercial property owners would not see a misdemeanor, have a fourth-degree misdemeanor, is that correct, Mrs. Browning? Fourth-degree misdemeanor, but instead potentially see a fine. She indicated that it would take about a month or so to get that back. And no other business coming before the committee this evening. Had a motion from Mrs. Westfall to adjourn, and Mr. Richardson seconded. The meeting was adjourned at 7:38.
Thank you. Are there any other committee reports to be made at this time? Are there any committee referrals to be made at this time? If not, I refer you to the December bank reconciliation on the information list and also to the fourth quarter management reports. These are always interesting to look through if you have any questions about city operations. And I encourage you to take the time to get them into your binders so that you have that information organized when you need it. We are at the end of our agenda with no further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and this council stands adjourned until three weeks from last, no, three weeks from tonight. No, from last night, on Monday, March 6, 2023 at 7:30 PM. So 20 days out till our next meeting. Thank you for attending. Thank you to the scouts for being here.